Hello everyone, today we will be studying about capital markets together. So let's start. Capital market in India, we will be using the source vision IS, weekly focus eighty-sixth, channeling finance for growth introduction. Our world is more complex and interconnected than ever before. Consequently, the modern global financial markets are now a complex structure made up of elements that no longer work in silos. Capital markets all over the world have witnessed growing integration within as well as across boundaries spurred by deregulation, globalization and advances in the information technology. After two years of a global pandemic and countless other geopolitical occurrences, the Indian capital market has continued to stay resilient in the face of global macroeconomic instability. However, even the strongest of capital markets cannot remain unscathed forever. In this context, we need to first understand what is meant by capital market. What role does capital market play in promoting and sustaining the growth of an economy? What are the factors responsible for the growth of the capital market in India? And what are the possible deficiencies in Indian capital market? And what more can be done to sustain the growth in India's capital market? As we can see, these are the questions we will be dealing with today. Moving on. What is meant by capital market? Capital or financial markets across the world allow savings and investment to be channeled between suppliers, people or institutions with capital to lend or invest in those who seek capital. This is done through trade in financial assets such as bonds, shares, international currencies and derivatives. These are the keywords which they might ask in the problems. Also, what is capital market? The trading is done in financial assets such as bonds, shares, international currencies and derivatives. Now capital markets are part of the financial market where buyers and sellers can engage in the trade of long-term financial instruments. Long-term here means for a period greater than one year. This is again important, they might give them to us in one liner MCQs. Okay, so what are capital markets if we have to sum up? It is the part of the financial market where buyers and sellers can engage in the trade of long-term financial instruments. Of long-term financial instruments. And here what does long-term entail? Long-term means period greater than one year. And long-term means period greater than one year. Okay, moving on. The overriding goal of the institutions that enter into the capital markets is to raise money for their long-term purposes, which usually comes down to expanding their businesses and increasing their revenues. The long-term purpose of any industry or capital market is to expand their business and increase their revenues. Now, the financial instruments trading in the capital markets are equities. Equities are the share in the ownership of the company. That means if I'm, if I have a company, say I have hundred shares, so those shares of my company are called equities. Okay, debt securities. Debt securities are instruments issued by the government or companies to raise funds. Say I have a company and I want some loan from the market. I cannot just go and ask for a huge lump sum loan, right? So what I'll do, I'll issue some debt securities that people may buy and from there I'll raise loans. Okay, so there are many small debts collected from many entities. That's what I entail from debt securities. Moving on. Derivatives. These are the instruments that derive the value from an underlying asset. These are the instruments that derive the value from an underlying asset. Okay, so if there is an asset, if there is an instrument, what value I can derive from it? Say if there is hundred rupees, what value can I derive from it? I can buy probably ten chips, maybe that's my asset, right? So yeah, what we can derive from an asset, that is its derivative. That is simple enough. Mutual funds. It is an instrument that collects money from a number of investors and invests the money in various assets. Mutual fund is basically what debt securities are doing. They are raising small, small money, but debt securities are raising for their own interest. But in mutual funds, what happens? If there is an agent, let's say that agent will collect money from various people and say that I am going to invest that in a mutual fund. Now what that person will do? That person will take that money and then invest that money in different assets. So what happens? Each person's money will get divided into various shares so that his positives and negatives, the downfall and the upfall all accumulately give him a decent amount of money in return. If that person would have invested in one share, he could have lost all of his money. But now through mutual fund, his money is been divided into various shares. So that what mutual fund is. Mutual fund is, they collect money. Say M1, M2, M3, M4. They have collected money from various sources. They have pooled it up, now everyone's money is then pooled. Now they'll share one, share two, share three and share four. Say share one gives a return of five percent. Share two gave a negative of two percent. Share three gave a positive of four percent. Share four gave a positive of mainly six percent. So now you would know that if they would have individually invested in share two, they would have gotten a loss. But now since everything is collected in a more mean way, they'll get a decent amount of money back. So that is mutual fund. Moving on, exchange traded funds, ETFs. ETFs, financial resource of multiple investors are pooled and is later used to buy capital market instruments. Okay, so what they do? Investors, they pull up money or financial resources from many investors and then they later use that resource to buy capital market instruments. What are capital market instruments? Capital market instruments are part of the financial market where buyers and sellers can engage in the trade of long-term financial instruments. So that's what it is, exchange traded funds, ETFs. Now we have to kind of keep this in mind that all these collectively form financial instruments. Because it can be asked as a question, we don't have to go deep into it. But on a surface level, we have to understand what they entail and if not give the correct answer, but we have to build up that much knowledge so that we can eliminate options from the problems. So if they say financial instrument also entail your, say anything like you, you give money to your friend. And that is not a financial instrument. It doesn't come in any of these categories. So you have to keep them in mind. These are equities. What is equity? Equities are the share of the ownership of a company. So basically they are the shares of the company. Debt security, we've already sorted that out. It's basically the money people, government or companies raise for funds. Derivatives, derivatives are the value from the assets they have. Instruments, yeah, that is derivative. Mutual fund, you must have invested in or heard about a mutual fund. That is not a alien thing. Exchange traded funds is something you might have seen in news. But here you have to explicitly remember because it's a new term, relatively new year term. Exchange traded funds or ETFs, it's a part of financial instrument. Again, what is exchange traded funds? Financial resources of multiple investors are pulled in and later used to buy capital market instruments. With exchange traded funds, ETFs, people buy capital market instruments. Okay, now moving on. Capital market generally comprises two segments, primary market and secondary market. Primary market is also known as new issue market, deals with new securities being issued for the first time. Okay, so if a new security is being, is entering a market, that is issued in the primary market. The secondary market is also known as stock market or stock exchange like your Bombay Stock Exchange, BSE. It is the purpose for the purchase and sale of existing securities. So in the primary market, new securities are issued for the first time. And in the secondary market, your stock exchange or purchase and sale of existing securities take place. Okay, now what is capital market structure in India? We have to see it on a peripheral level. Capital market, we have four agents here, government securities, industrial securities market, development financial institutions, DFIs and financial intermediaries. Let's look at them. What are government securities? These are the debt instruments issued by a government like treasury bills and bonds. So these are relatively risk-free instruments because there is a definite return. You know that there will be a return, government is not going to back out. So government securities usually have less rate of return than other securities because they are less risky. Okay, industrial securities market. Market for share and bonds of the companies. Market for share and bonds of the companies. Then development financial institutions, DFIs. They specialize development banks, specialized development banks or subsidiaries set up to support private sector development. These are the examples for Nabad Sebi, vekera, right? These are the National Bank for Financing, Infrastructure and Development, NOF, BFFID, Exim Bank, Export Import Bank, Nabad, National Bank for Rural Development, NHB, National Housing Board and SIDB. What is SIDB? Let me Google it real quick. In the meantime, let's try to remember all the development financial institutions. Those are NABFID, National Bank for Financing, Infrastructure and Development, Exim Bank, Export Import Bank, your Nabad, National Bank for Rural Development, your NHB, National Housing Bank, accolade as Sidbhi, it's not SIDB, that's why. Sidbhi is basically Small Industries Development Bank of India. They have a misprint over here, no worries. Sidbhi. That is Small Industries Development Bank of India. These are small stuff which we must remember. It will help us in the interview. Industries. Development Bank of India. Right? Other ones we already know, NABFID. It is National Bank for Financing, Infrastructure and Development. Exim Bank is Export Import Bank. Nabad, NHB and Sidbhi. Other institutions entail IFCI Limited, IDVI etc. Okay, we know about this, these, so there is no difficulty in remembering. Now financial intermediaries. Financial intermediaries include merchant bank, mutual funds, leasing companies, venture capital companies and other financial organizations. Okay, so let's go over it again. Capital market structure in India, they include government securities. Government securities are debt instruments issued by government like treasury bills and bonds etc. Industrial securities market, market shares of bonds and companies. They have a new issues market and old issues market, which is stock exchange. We already saw it. Yeah, one more thing, in the new issues market, they have new securities such as IPO, initial public offering. IPOs initial initial public offering. And they come under new issues market. Because IPO is generally issued when a share is for the first time issued in the market. And they, you have to remember, they come as IPOs, initial public offering. New issues market, yes, okay. And stock exchanges, old issues market. Then comes development financial institutions, which include all those banks like Nabad, Exim Bank and HP, Sidbhi and NAFBIT, National Bank for Financing, Infrastructure and Development. And financial intermediaries include merchant bank, mutual funds, leasing companies, venture capital companies and other financial organizations. Okay. Moving on. Status of India's capital market. India's capital market have a history of more than a century. However, they remained largely inactive till nineteen seventies. Today, segments of India's capital markets are comparable with counterparts in many of the advanced economies in terms of efficiency, tradability, resilience and stability. This can be observed by the falling trend. Okay, so what can be observed? That the India's capital market today is comparable with many of the advanced economies in terms of efficiency, tradability, resilience and stability. So let's see what is observed in the India's capital market, consistent growth. In terms of size, all the major segments of the capital market was the central government securities, which is called GSEC market, market for state development loans, STL, corporate bond market and the equity market have experienced consistent growth during the last few decades. And it's a commendable thing. Second. Resilient market. India's capital market, which stood several periods of stress, notably the Asian financial crisis of nine, I'm really sorry, Asian financial crisis of nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. You must have studied in your economics class, yeah? The global financial crisis of two thousand seven-nine, taper tantrum episodes in two thousand thirteen, which is a sign of the increasing maturity. That's a very commendable thing. That our capital market, which stood so many financial distress, like Asian financial crisis nineteen ninety-seven. Let's start it out. So that it's easier for us to write it in mains. Asian financial crisis nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. Global financial crisis, two thousand seven-nine, taper tantrum. Taper tantrum of two thousand thirteen. You must have heard about these crises. You don't need to know them in detail because you're not an optional student. But yes, you must know them in a peripheral view. But one thing we must know what is taper tantrum? Taper tantrum was basically where investors had a tantrum to a reaction to the news of central bank slowing down or stopping bond purchases. What used to happen that bond yielded reacted sharply to these what's a, you can say rumors or probably serious announcements of the banks. The sharp climb in bond yields after the central bank announcement is called taper tantrum. Okay, the further among major emerging market economies, Indian markets outperformed their peer in April, December twenty-twenty-one after COVID. Okay, then flourishing primary market. In the year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, there was a boom in the fundraising through IPOs, initial public offerings by many new age companies, tech startup unicorns. What this shows that new startups and companies were issuing shares, which is a huge deal in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. There was a boom in fundraising. In April twenty-one, eighty-six, eighty-nine crores were raised by seventy-five IPOs. Whoa, much higher than any, any year last ticket by a large margin. This is something we must remember. Like around ninety thousand crores were raised by a seventy-five IPO issues. Oh my God, that's a huge deal. If it is divided by hundred only, you can realize ninety crore rupees were raised by each of the IPOs. Oh my God. Much higher than in any year. In which year are we talking about? April to November twenty-twenty-one. Diversification. In addition to equity and debt, capital market is also diversifying into a large number of new instruments such as hybrids and convertibles, real estate investment trust, REITs, infrastructure investment trust invites. You must have heard of it in your current affairs class. Now growing participation. Participation by individual investors in the equity cash segment has increased considerably from thirty-six percent in twenty sixteen-seventeen to forty-five percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. That is something, it's happening. A lot of the youngsters are going into a stock market and investing zone. That's why the number of investors have increased and it's a good thing, it's a good thing for Indian economy. Why? Because the more investors are there, the more companies can excel and the more our economy will grow. Rose from thirty-six percent in twenty sixteen-seventeen to forty-five percent in twenty twenty twenty-one. Now let's analyze this chart, what it's saying. Growth in outstanding stock of the Indian capital market. Here we can see GSEC, it's growing. Equity market capitalization, it's also growing, but yet dipped in twenty thirteen, but right now both are good. Corporate bonds grew and STL was just below it, growing at the same pace. Okay. So if they ask that if equity market capital, capitalization, did it dipped in this decade? You can say yes, it did not grow uniformly, it did dip. That's the trend we have to take notice of. What role does the capital market play in promoting and sustaining the growth of an economy? There has been a strong correlation, strong correlation between capital markets and economic growth. With well-developed capital markets offering a variety of benefits to all its participants. What are takeaways? That there is a strong correlation between capital markets and economic growth. For the industries. Reduced funding cost. Capital markets offer an alternative source of funding, better pricing and longer maturities as well as access to a wider investment investor base, thus reducing overall funding cost. It's really good for the industrial capital market. As we saw, it reduces its funding cost because it gives a very good alternative source of funding, better pricing, longer maturity as well as access to a wider investor base. Then equitable development. Capital markets allow companies to give their employees shares by employee stock ownership plans. So really good scheme, actually they do. Capital markets allow companies to give their employees shares by employee stock ownership plans. So that the employees, they themselves can invest their money in their own companies. All the hard work they are doing to push their company forward, they should also reap the benefit. And that's what capital market does. It helps them to bring all those people into the chain. Transparency in working. A well-functioning capital market tends to improve information quality as it plays a major role in encouraging the adoption of stronger corporate governance principles. Adoption of stronger corporate governance principles that supporting a trading environment which is founded on integrity. Really important, if there is integrity, more people will like to come in, invest their hard-earned money. If there is no transparency, then people will try to avoid it, right? Yeah, moving on, enabling expansion. Existing companies, because of their performance, can expand the industries and also go in for diversification of business using funds channeled through capital market. If you must remember, GEO of Reliance, they started it via capital market scheme. They did an IPO of GEO and that's how they launched GEO as the biggest wifi company there is right now. Now for the investors, better returns definitely. Capital markets can offer more attractive investment opportunities with better returns. Of course, risk is there, but if we invest judiciously and cautiously, you'll get good returns. Risk management. With a wider range of securities and instruments offered, capital markets can help investors diversify their portfolios and manage risk. The more you'll diversify your investing assets, the more you'll reap in benefits. Like if you are getting loss in one share, you'll get more benefit in another share and overall they'll balance it out and you'll get some extra money in your hand. That's what it says by diversifying. This is particularly important for institutional investors, including pension funds and insurance companies, yes. For the government, it's an alternate source of funding, just like for the industry. A developed local capital market provides an alternative source of funding that can complement bank financing, very important. It allows them to finance and fiscal, and finance the fiscal deficit by borrowing from the local market without exchanging, without exchange risk. Yeah, if they are borrowing from the local market, they don't have to worry about the exchange risk which you face when you are borrowing from other countries. Yes, because if the exchange rate goes up or down, you'll have to pay in more cash, right? Yeah, so that's a huge deal when government thinks of borrowing from where to borrow. If they have a good local capital market, then alternative source of funding is there to complement bank financing if they don't have to go for external borrow. Second one is facilitating this investment. Capital markets provide an excellent route for investments to reduce the fiscal burden and raise money to meet public needs. This is self-explanatory. For overall economy, capital formation happens. It plays a critical role in mobilizing savings for investment in productive assets with a view to enhance a country's long-term growth prospects and thus acts as a major catalyst in transforming the company into a more efficient, innovative and competitive marketplace within the global arena. Yes, if we have more capital assets, our capital formation is huge deal for a company's economic growth. If that is happening, we will prosper in the future in a few years only. And it acts as a major catalyst in transforming the economy into a more efficient, innovative and competitive marketplace. Now stability in the market. They can serve the financial sector by enhancing financial stability and reducing vulnerabilities to exchange rate shocks, yeah, and sudden interruptions of capital flows. If we depend on FDIs, foreign direct investments, or we depend on foreign markets, there is always a risk of us getting affected by their turbulences, right? Like taper tantrum, when the US economy decreases their rate, what happens? All the fund starts diverting to USA. That is not what we want. We want our money. That is not what we want. We want our money to stay in India, we want more money to come in India, right? So if we have a stable capital market, what will happen? We'll get a little bit of. A buffer barrier from all these vulnerabilities of exchange rate shocks and sudden interruptions of capital flows. If we don't depend on foreign inflow heavily. Now, it will also attract, attract foreign investment. If we have a good capital market, foreign flow will come automatically. Won't have to depend on it, but it will be a good bonus for us. A well-developed capital market is capable of attracting funds even from foreign country through foreign investment. And funding risky ventures. Capital markets provide viable long-term funding to crucial sectors of the economy such as infrastructure. Which may find it difficult to secure funding through risk-averse banking system. Banks, what do they want? They want short-term loan returns. But these, these sectors such as infrastructure development. They require many years. They take two, three years to just. You know, they need ten to twelve years minimum. So capital market is a. Viable sector. Where. Infrastructure and other. Capital. They, they, they benefit from it, yeah. Because in other case, they find it difficult to secure funding through risk-averse banking system. Now moving on. How can the capital market bring change in society? All we have read through now is capital market is quite good in. In the growth part, in the monetary part, now how will it bring change in society? Through its various instruments, capital market have the potential to emerge as a mechanism. That can potentially help channel funding for the sustainable development of society. Some key instruments have been discussed below. Social upliftment impact bonds. These are unsecured bonds to raise funds towards a project with a social impact or a development impact, okay? The investors agreed to pay on a condition, the money raised has led to predetermined variable social outcomes. They come under CSR, right? Companies do want to do CSR, so um um corporate social responsibility. So impact bonds are where a project is undertaken if it has a social impact or a development impact. These are unsecured bonds to raise funds for it. Then social stock exchange. It provides an alternative fundraising mechanism for nonprofit organizations to get listed and raise funds for social work. Including eradicating hunger, poverty, malnutrition, inequality, promoting gender inequality. Ensuring environmental sustainability and promoting education. So what is social stock exchange? It is an alternative fundraising mechanism for NGOs to get listed and raise funds for all these social works. What is muni bonds? Muni bonds or muni bonds, let's see. It is a debt instrument that is issued by municipal corporations, okay, that's where it comes from, muni. Municipal corporations and other associated bodies in India. These bonds are issued for socio-economic development purposes, providing amenities to households or other public projects. So muni bonds are basically municipal bonds. They might ask, it's a really good term and we might get confused with the ancient history part, right? Muni, muni, Brahman, we might get confused. So. It's a good keyword. It's a debt instrument. They might ask, what is muni? What is muni bonds? You have to. Understand the term and pick the keyword as it's your life. Debt instruments issued by municipal corporations. Issued by. Municipal. Corporations, corporations, yes. And issued for socio-economic development purposes. For. Socio-economic. Development. Purposes, okay. Small and medium enterprise exchanges. The platform provides an entrepreneur and investor-friendly environment. That allows small and medium enterprises, SMEs, from unorganized sectors to be listed in a regulated and organized manner. It's a very good scheme and government is always pushing for SMEs to get into. A regulated and organized market for fundraising. Because they usually go for informal debt market which is not a good source of funding. These help in enabling equity resource mobilization through market participation. It's a really good scheme for SMEs. Then agricultural commodity derivatives market. They can help farm sector by providing a nationwide platform for the discovery of prices. Catalyzing the development of marketing infrastructure like warehousing and enabling physical market participants to hedge their price risk. Agricultural commodity derivatives market. We know how agricultural questions are going up in prelims. They might ask if there is a derivative market like this or not. You must be prepared. For that question. Agricultural. Commodity. Derivatives markets. They can help farm sector providing a nationwide platform. It's a nationwide platform. For the discovery of prices, catalyzing the development of marketing infrastructure like warehousing. Physical market participants to hedge their. Price risk. To hedge their. Price risk, okay. Now sustainable investment in climate finance. Environmental social governance ESG considerations. Through ESG reporting for listed companies, capital market can lead to more long-term investments in sustainable economic activities and projects. They also empower consumers to make more sustainable decisions about the products they buy and the companies they support. So the keyword here is. ESG, what is ESG? Environmental. Social. Governance. Really good key term. ESG, environmental. It consists of climate change strategy, biodiversity, water efficiency, energy efficiency. Carbon intensity, environmental management system. Social, equal opportunities, freedom of association, health and safety, human rights, consumer and product responsibility and child labor. And governance, business ethics, compliance, board independence, executive compensation and shareholder democracy. Really good key term. ESG. Write it. And memorize it. Environmental, social and governance consideration, okay. Now green bonds. These are capital market instruments designed to support specific climate-related or environmental projects. Aim at reducing the anthropogenic impact on the environment and climate. Green bonds, we have been hearing about green bonds for a long time now. What factors have been responsible for the growth of capital market in India? Let's see. Modernization of trading system, depository system. A major reform in the Indian stock market has been the introduction of depository system. And scripless trading mechanism since nineteen ninety six. Before this, the tracing system was based on the physical transfer of securities, okay. Now we have a system of depository and scripless trading mechanism. Before that, physical transfer of securities used to take place. Second is National Securities Depositories Limited, NSTL. And Central Securities Depository Limited, CDSL. In India, hold financial securities like shares and bonds in dematerialized form and facilitate trading in stock exchanges, okay. Screen-based trading. In Indian stock exchanges, we're modernized in the nineties, okay. With the computerized screen-based trading system, SBTS. It electronically matches orders on a strict price-time priority. It cuts down time, cost and risk of error and fraud and therefore leads to improved operational efficiency. It's, it is computerized. You might have seen how stock exchange works if you have traded in any of the stock exchanges or seen your parents do it. So that's how our stock exchange capital market works in India. Quicker settlement of trades. SEBI introduced, these are the rules of SEBI. SEBI is your security exchange bank of India. So it all comes under the purview of SEBI, okay, moving on. SEBI introduced rolling settlement for all stocks in all exchanges in two thousand one, ushering in a landmark change. It's a really cool quicker settlement of trades used by SEBI. Then increasing awareness. Business newspapers and financial journals have made people aware of new long-term investment opportunities in the security market. Now one thing they have missed are the YouTubers. Which are acting as a huge catalyst. For awaring people and ushering in the new generation in the field of investment and exchange world. Emergence of new instruments, new financial instruments like mutual funds, venture capital funds, etc. Emerged to provide medium and long-term funds to these firms which found it difficult to raise funds from primary markets and by way of loans from bank. For those firms which are innovative, they usually. Banks refuse to give them loans first of all, banks because banks don't give loans to such innovations. Banks give loans to secure people. Big firms, secure firms where they know they'll get returns either that or when if a government is backed. If government backing is there, then they'll do it like in MSM or agricultural loans. But here government backing is not there, so they won't do it. So from where innovation and other stuff will get funding, they'll get funding through venture capital funds, mutual funds, angel funding. That's how they get funding. Growth of ancillary industries like merchant banking and underwriting business helped in providing services. Including capital issue management, provision consultancy services, etc. Necessary for the growth of capital markets. And liberalization measures. Economic liberalization of the nineteen nineties provided a lasting impetus with foreign institution investors, FIIs. Foreign institutional investors being allowed access to the Indian capital market. What happened in the nineteen nineties, economic liberalization happened, LPG happened. Liberalization, privatization and globalization happened. And after that. Our market was opened up to foreign investment and foreign institutional investors came in and they. Uh were given the access to Indian capital market. Now, while India has come a long way in liberating capital account transactions in the last three decades. It currently has partial capital account convertibility. We don't have full capital account convertibility. This question usually comes in the prelims and we have to keep that in mind. We don't have full. Capital account. Convertibility is not there. What we do have is partial. We have partial account convertibility. And they always ask why it's not there because we don't want to be fully dependent on foreign investment. Because they might come, they might come and um take over any company capital venture, they feel like we don't want that. We want that to be. Our own, but they want, we want their contribution, we don't want them to have ownership of it. Partial capital account convertibility is there. Full capital account convertibility is not there. This is something. You must remember, it's very important. Now, the question they might ask in the prelim means full capital account convertibility. CAC, is India ready? Let's look into it. The capital account records the net change in foreign assets and liabilities held by a country. Convertibility refers to the ability to convert domestic currency into foreign currencies and vice versa. To make payments for balance of payment transaction. Capital account convertibility is the ability to for freedom to convert domestic currency for capital account transactions, okay. Free capital mobility helps in broadening the investor base for recipient country financial assets potentially reducing borrowing cost. Facilitating better risk allocation and enhancing global liquidity. However, it can also lead to risk like high exposure to global shocks. Credit and asset bubbles and volatility in the exchange rate making inflation targeting difficult, difficult, etc. Thus, Tarapoor Committee was constituted by the RBI for suggesting a roadmap for full convertibility on the rupee. On capital account which presented several prerequisites. So what are the parameters, present situations, fiscal deficit? Recommendation was to reduce it to three percent of the GDP, three point five percent of the GDP. Present situation is fiscal deficit for financial year twenty twenty one twenty two was six point seven one percent of GDP. Inflation rates controlled between three to five percent, but present situation is it is five point eight eight percent CPI. Non-performing index assets add to be brought down to five percent. It is five point nine percent as per March twenty twenty two. Cash reserve ratio to be three percent, it is around four point five percent. Okay, thus to reap the full benefits of full CAC, India first needs sound macroeconomic fundamentals. Which they enlisted here, we need. These to have full capital account. Convertibility, we need this. I'm sorry if I'm making it difficult for you to read. It is. This, but we are presently here. So what we need is three point five percent of the GDP for fiscal deficit. Inflation control between three to five percent, NP is brought down to five percent and CSR. CRR cash reserve ratio at three percent. We need them and a well-developed financial system and a sound market infrastructure, including efficient markets for funding and risk transfer. Now development of institutional framework. Credit. Rating agencies, a credit rating agency rates the creditworthiness of instruments. Including corporate bonds, government bonds, certificates of deposit and other debt instruments that are collateral. This providing guidance to investors for determining credit risk, yeah. Uh so credit rating agencies, they rate their agencies and people, foreign investors specifically. They look at those ratings and then they decide where to invest or not. So it's a huge deal if we want foreign investment or even domestic investment. Uh credit rating information services of India Limited. Crissell was set up in nineteen eighty eight and investment information and credit rating agency of India Limited, Icra, was in nineteen ninety one. Development banks and financial institutions. For providing long-term funds to industries, the government set up several development funds. Financial institutions, DFIs. Including the newly established National Bank for Infrastructure Financing and Development, NAFBIT. NAB. Fed. National. Bank for. Infrastructure. Financing and. Development. The first DFI, Development Financial Institution. Was Finance Corporation of India, IF, Industrial Finance Corporation of India. IFCI, the pin nineteen forty eight, followed by a number of other development banks and institutions like. Industrial Credit and Investment Corporation of India, ICICI in nineteen fifty five. Industrial Development Bank, IDB in nineteen sixty four, etc. Okay. You can look into it, try to remember it if you can, if not, no worries. You must know the first DFI was Industrial Financial Corporation of India just after independence. Ifkai and I think that will be more than enough. Independent regulatory body, the Securities and Exchange Board of India, SEBI, was established as a statutory body in the year nineteen ninety two to protect the interest of investors in securities and to promote the development of and to regulate securities market in matters connected. We must remember this, SEBI. Nineteen ninety two, it's a statutory body. Not a constitutional body, not an executive body, but a statutory body. It has come into force through a law, law of the parliament, okay. Now legislative framework governing the capital market in India. We have Companies Act nineteen fifty six as amended in twenty thirteen deals with the issue allotment and transfer of securities. Disclosures to be made in public issues, underwriting rights and payment of interest and dividends. Securities Contract Regulation Act nineteen fifty six, regulatory act deals in all types of issues related to stock trading. It prevents any kind of defective transactions, okay. Depository Act nineteen ninety six provides for establishment of depositories for electronic maintenance and transfer of ownership of T-Mat securities. Now globalization of Indian capital market, impact of global crisis on India market. With the global outlook being clouded by recession risk post pandemic and due to headwinds from geopolitical developments, we have Russia, Ukraine war. High-risk aversion has stripped financial markets, producing surges of volatility, sales of of risk assets and large spillovers, including flights to safety and safe haven demand for the US dollar. As now India is more connected due to factors like advances in ICT, liberalization of national financial and capital markets, competition among the providers of intermediary services, et cetera. Volatility across global economies can have a significant bearing on the Indian capital market. However, Indian economy can still remain resilient with the support of a strong macroeconomic fundamentals and buffers. Thus, given the uncertainties of the current period, India should remain dynamic and pragmatic while managing risk. Okay, I forgot one thing that we have to take into consideration, okay. It was here on full account convertibility. We have to remember Tarapur Committee. Tarapur Committee is related to. Full, you can say. Tarapur Committee constituted by RBI. Gave a roadmap. For full convertibility. Tarapur Committee. Write it, remember it, embed it in your minds, okay, now moving on. What are the possible deficiencies in the Indian capital market? Indian economy is one of the largest and fastest growing economies in the world. There have been various reforms that have acted as a catalyst in the growth of the Indian economy. However, specific challenges continue to block the development of the Indian capital market. We have inadequate disclosure. Quality of information companies are giving out under disclosure norms is not adequate with many companies treating the disclosure requirements just as a checkwork exercise in their annual reports, lack of proper disclosures can mislead the investors. Inadequate protection to investors, the protections given to investors in case of a default by brokers and subbroker are inadequate, further there is a lack of effective investor grievance redressal management. Okay, slowing retail participation. The share of retail investors in the cash market volumes on National Stock Exchange has dropped, okay. Has dropped to thirty four point seven percent, the lowest in at least five years mainly due to volatility. In domestic and global markets, the share of household saving invested in equities in tier two and tier three cities are also quite low. Fragmentation of regulatory authorities, the present functions and powers of regulatory agencies for the security market seem to be fragmented. SEBI is the primary body responsible for the regulation of the securities market. And RBI also has regulatory involvement in the capital market regarding foreign exchange and regulates primary dealers in the government security market. We have to demarket because they might ask, SEBI regulation of securities market. And RBI. And it has the regulatory mechanism. Regulatory. Involvement. Regarding foreign exchange. Foreign exchange and primary dealers. In government. Security market. Mal practices, unfair practices and scams. Price manipulation, it is a common practice that price of shares of companies proposing to come out of the public issue or right issues are artificially pushed up in the market. The growing use of social media appli- applications and exchange of information through these forums has provided platforms to investors that may enable the coordination of their actions to manipulate the stock market in the short term, that is true. If a YouTuber suggests to your stock, they might be doing a fraud, you never know. Because in that way, many people will go and try to buy that share and its market value will increase. Definitely a scam is a possibility. Co-location scam. NSC was involved in a scam relating to its co-location facilities which gave unfair advantage to its traders, okay. Insider trading, yeah, it's a huge issue. Annual report of SEBI for the year twenty sixteen seventeen revealed that all of the investigations taken up by SEBI, the insider trading cases covered fourteen percent as opposed to twelve cases. With each passing year, the offense of insider trading is significantly increasing. Now, NSC's co-location scam, how this scam took place, okay, what it is, I, I was intrigued about it. What does NSC's co-location scam? Co-location facilities are dedicated spaces in the exchange building, right next to exchange servers where high frequency and algo traders can place their systems or programs. Going to the close proximity to stock exchange servers, traders in these facilities can have an advantage over others as they got faster access to the price we distributed. Okay, they get faster access to the price we distributed by the stock exchange. It was alleged that one of the trading members was provided unfair access between twenty twelve and twenty fourteen that enabled him to log in first to the secondary server and get the data before others in the co-location facility. This preferential access look allowed the algo traders of this member to be ahead of others in the order execution. Since then, SEBI has put in place stricter regulations to close the loopholes and to address concerns relating to co-location facilities, including by making trading free of, okay, making trading feed free of cost to all trading members and asking exchanges to provide managed co-location service through eligible vendors for ensuring low-cost services to all interested brokers, okay. So that was NSC's co-location scam wars. Because those people were just next to the building of the server, they were getting faster access. And also one of them was given access to the secondary server, okay. It's a huge scam. Okay, now how insider trading impact capital market, okay, let's see, there's a conversation. Hello, Vinnay, have you seen the web series camp when nineteen twenty two? Okay, we all have. No, I haven't, but I know it is based on the insider trading scam, yes, I still, okay, we know what, how insider trading scam works. We have an insider who gives out, who spills a secret and you get an unfair advantage over others. Okay, let's see, they might have given, okay. Uh insider trading happens when trading of shares is done by someone who has access to unpublished price-sensitive information about a particular company's share of securities, yes. It is in any information relating to a company, which if published is likely to materially affect the price of the securities of the companies. This includes periodical financial results of the company, any major expansion plan, amalgamation, mergers or takeovers, et cetera. Okay. So, how it can happen if a person associated with the company tells you uh capacity information. Um, well, I can invest in the company. Yeah, you'll invest in a company knowing surely its free, uh share prices will rise in the future. That's what trading scammers. Incompetency of credit rating agencies, CRAs. There have been instances where CRAs don't do a competent, honest and independent job, which can have wide-ranging consequences as seen in the case of companies such as ILFS. Some issues identified with the working of CRAs include issuers are charged for rating by CRAs, that is, issues are paymasters and independence of ratings becomes questionable. CRAs are not accountable for the ratings given by them. Disruptions brought on by evolving technology. Technology transfers like artificial intelligence, robot advisory, decentralized finance, DeFi, okay. Are changing how capital market function, giving rise to a new regulatory challenges like increased risk of data threats and technical downtimes, lack of transparency. Impact on competitive landscape, et cetera. The key word over here is DeFi. Decentralized. Finance. Other issues. Lack of diversification in instruments, especially in the commodities market and social and green bonds. Weakness in industrial production trend, lower production is normally associated with lower demand and this is a signal of a slowdown in economic activity and leads to a lack of investment in the capital market. Now decline in the volume of trading regional stocks. Despite prevalent shortcomings, regulatory bodies have been proactively taking steps to strengthen India's capital markets in the face of an ongoing issues. Okay. Now what is algo trading? Algo trading is another key term. Algo trading is basically, let's see what is algo trading. A concern for Indian capital markets. Algorithm trading refers to the orders generated at a super fast speed by the use of advanced mathematical models that involve automated execution of trade. Almost fifty percent of daily trading volume in India is executed through algo trading. So algo trading is basically algorithm trading. Algo trading is capable of deepening the capital markets, aiding retail investors and generating benefits like faster speed and accuracy in the placing trades. However, unregulated platforms in India are offering algorithm trading services or strategies to investors without taking requisite approval from the exchanges. This can lead to risk like misuse of systematic market manipulation during the retail investors by guaranteeing them higher returns, lack of proper grievance redress mechanism and unfair advantage over small brokers, et cetera. Further, algorithms may lack of visibility and transparency cannot compete with the ability of human brain to react to unanticipated changes in opportunities. Thus, appropriate regulatory mechanisms need to be established to manage risk effectively. It's a huge concern right now. Algorithm trading. Look out for this. Now recent steps taken for strengthening India's capital markets. Tightening of disclosure, disclosure norms. SEBI mandated enhanced disclosure norms for IPO-bound companies. Companies would have to disclose key performance indicators, details of pricing of shares based on past transactions and past fundraising from its investors. Okay, new framework to prevent insider trading. SEBI has created a framework that will prevent company insiders from dealing in shares during the closure of the trading window. Further, mutual fund houses have been included in the stringent SEBI prohibition of insider trading regulations, okay. Mutual fund is there. Now regulating algo trading, SEBI came out with guidelines for stroke brokers, stock brokers who provide services relating to algorithm trading to investors to prevent instances of misselling. Norms in alternate investment funds, AIFs, venture capital funds and uh invested eased in overseas market. SEBI released guidelines to protect the interest of investors in securities and to provide, promote the development of and to regulate securities market. New framework for credit rating agencies. From January, okay, from January one twenty three aims at enhancing transparency and improving the rating process for credit enhancement ratings. It's a recent happening. New framework. For credit. Rating agencies. From January first twenty twenty three. Shortening of settlement cycles, SEBI allows T plus one settlement on optional basis. This can reduce the risk of pay-in payout defaults, lower margin requirements and give investors more liquidity with the availability of funds and securities. Focus on social responsibility. Framework for social stock exchange. SEBI notified a framework introducing a social stock exchange in India which will provide social enterprises and additional revenue to raise funds. Business Responsibility and Sustainability Report, BRSR. aims to establish links between the financial results of a business with its ESG performance. SEBI directed top thousand listed companies in India to publish an annual BRSR from twenty twenty one, twenty two on a voluntary basis and from twenty twenty two onwards on the compulsory basis. SEBI announced that issuers of municipal debt securities can issue green bonds in compliance with guidelines, okay. We can write this, this might come as a prelims question. We, we always should be on the lookout for possible prelims questions. Issuers of municipal debt securities. Can issue green bonds. In compliance with guidelines. Okay. Liberalization of forex flows in capital markets by RBI. Introducing the fully accessible route, FAR. Through FAR, non-residents can invest in specified government securities without any restrictions, okay. Easing of the external commercial borrowings framework. End user restrictions like cost selling, et cetera, were relaxed by RBI. For instance, the limit under the automatic route for ECBs was temporarily increased from US dollar seven fifty million or its equivalent per financial year to US dollar one point five billion. Increase the limit for foreign portfolio investors to invest in the local debt market from one lakh crore to two point five lakh crore under the voluntary retention route. These we must remember or at least look at it from time to time, these data. These are important datas. Now RBI introduced a voluntary retention route, VRR, to assist foreign portfolio investors in investing in India's debt market. Now what more can be done to sustain the growth in India's capital market? Expand the retail investor base. To sustain the current momentum in the growth of retail participation, retail investors should be empowered with appropriate analytics including stock performance metrics through various modes such as websites of intermediaries, including exchanges. Tier two and tier three cities should be focal point to the attraction of investment in capital markets because they are being left out. Strengthening the legal and regulatory framework for investor protection. One of the most critical building blocks of market infrastructure is a proper legal framework. We need a proper legal framework that ensures investor protection by acting as a deterrent to market abuse and mal practices. Enhancing quality of disclosure. Documents as important as the financial results, annual reports and corporate governance. Reports need the level of quality the investors deserve. Effectively curbing malpractice and scams, legal actions. Class action suits can be introduced against or incorporates with special courts that should be assigned to deal with related matters. Stringent measures to be taken against companies as well as financial intermediaries engaged in any unfair or unethical trading selling trade practices. Redressing insider trading, it is not possible to fully control the actions of the insiders and hence the people holding a top managerial position that is directors, officers and other members of the company should set high standards of ethical behavior in their organizations. Reforming credit rating agencies. Interventions like the invested pay model. High transparency standards while issuing ratings etcetera can safeguard the interest of the investors. Regulation of algo trading. A strategy and program can be introduced so that algo trading is to be approved by the exchanges before they are deployed by traders. Diversification for increasing resources mobilization, there is a need to focus on other instruments like green bonds and commodities market. In conclusion, in light of the investment requirement in maximizing financing for development strategy. There is a greater need to develop and strengthen capital markets as they can help mobilize financing. Capital markets can have a role in channeling financing to the corporate sector and other strategic sectors such as infrastructure, education etcetera. It can help achieve the target of five trillion dollars economy which India has set itself. It's a really good conclusion, we can take cues from it for main answer writing. So, this is like a summary you can go through. But the main topic was really, really good material, was deeply analyzed. The things which you can remember for prelims are definitely this part. This part is definitely, that should be taken care of for prelims, I'll just write here. Prelims material and all the part which I have written over here in the white, you can jot it down and for revision purpose you can look through that. You can come to the video, look through them or make your own, whatever suits you because these are the important points for prelims. It was a huge document. But worth it, I think it was worth it. Thank you everyone, thank you for staying with me and studying with me, capital market in India. I'll see you. The next time.